Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the September 17, 2019 Board of Selectmen's Meeting. Could I have a roll call, please?
Uh, yes. Selectmen Slavin, Menese, Bruce, Pedebong, Chairman, Raffiano, as well as Town chairman, Charter Administrator, all present.
Terrific. Pledge of Allegiance. Let's see. Uh, Kim. How about Kim? I've seen her in a car today. Is that Kim? Yeah.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Announcements. What time is it? Okay. The appointment of things at 7:15, so we're okay. Announcements, please. Alan.
A couple of quick things. This past weekend, over at the Makepeace Facility, went to Holland Road, they had Woody's on the tavern, I believe it was the fourth year. They had a great turnout of cars, people, it was a very nice event, music, et cetera. Everybody had a good time. And for those on Saturday who left there to hit Cupcake Charlie's, good luck, because the line was about around the block. Plus, it's a good two-hour wait to get in and out of there. Cupcakes are good. Try it when you can. Thank you.
Yeah, it's easy enough. Simple enough. Okay. You're all set?
Okay.
Jim?
Um, if you're looking for people on the board online. Board openings, board and commission openings, and see if you like anything, and if so, apply online, if you would. That's all. Thanks.
All right. Peter?
Yeah, just a reminder that we haven't had a hard frost yet. Triple E is still out there. In fact, the county is spraying this end of the county, uh, I think, starting today, tomorrow, whenever. So it's still a threat. What I've done that reminds me to put it on every time I go outside is I took a stop and shop bag, and I put my bottle of Deep Woods Off in it, so I can't go out of the house without passing that. So it's a constant reminder to spray yourself before you go out. And, you know, don't think you can just go out to the mailbox and you won't get bitten by a mosquito, because it's the times when you don't expect anything to happen, or something does. So there's still a danger out there, so take the necessary precautions, please.
Okay. Mary?
Um, the library's doing their annual play fundraiser, which is gonna be Friday, October 18th. Twenty-five dollars a person. It's gonna be at the Redmond Hall, 6:30 to 9:30. There'll be appetizers, desserts, and raffle. Proceeds will benefit the Wareham Library Foundation. There's also, the Wareham Fireman's Association is having a spaghetti supper and magic show and mentalism show. Adult audience recommended. Um, the, October 26, 6:00 PM, at the Redmond Hall also. Tickets are twenty dollars. You can contact Melissa Bourne, Howie Smith, or Ken Jordan, and I'll give the phone numbers to the press, so they have.
Very good. Anything else? Citizens' comments. Anybody here to speak to the board? Okay. I wanna tell everybody we have a sort of a long agenda tonight, so I wanna try to keep everything moving, so I don't mind, whereas you come up, state your case, do what you gotta do, but let's try to keep it moving, okay? Otherwise, we'll be kinda late. All right. Next, appointments, reappointments and interviews.
We have two for the Charter Review Committee. Neither one of them are here. We also have, um...
No, I'm here.
Oh, yeah. One's here.
Yeah, I'm here, for sure.
Judy's not here, right?
Judy? Judy White's not?
Excuse me. Judy sent a note off. She has a family issue that came up, and she wasn't gonna be able to make it. That was about an hour ago, so she won't be here.
Okay.
Okay. Sorry. Then we have three. Two aren't here, one is. This is Holly?
Yes.
Okay.
Come on down.
Come on down.
Hello?
Out of where I sit?
Nope.
Okay.
Anyone, just make sure you keep the mic close to you when you talk.
Okay.
Why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you wanna serve on the committee?
Uh, my name is Holly Van Nest. I've lived here in Wareham for almost four years. I live in the Onset Village. And since I've been here, I have been very interested in wanting to know about the town, how it works, understand things. So I've done a lot of various things to try to find information. I've read some of the bylaws, I've read some of the charter, I've had long conversations with different people. I've asked a lot of questions, I've participated in some meetings, and it's, it's hard when you move someplace to really get a good sense of, you know, what is, you know, how things work. So I thought, you know, I mean, I was also, at the same time, looking for something, some kind of volunteer work, because I work part-time, and I've always done volunteering wherever I've lived. And so I was looking at different things, and saw this, and felt like it was a good fit for me. It would, it would give me a lot of information about the town, but in return, I feel like I have a lot to offer. I have done a lot of work, that is varied work, but much of it very detail-oriented, trying to figure out all different kinds of systems and understand them. Currently, I work as a Medicare counselor. If anybody has delved into Medicare at all, you can understand that there's a whole lot of detail there to try to understand and communicate to people. So I feel like I have a lot to offer. I have some time to do some volunteering, and this just felt like a good fit for me.
All right. Questions of the board? Alan?
I spoke with Holly before, so I have questions.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Jim? I know Jim has a specific question for us.
I ask this to everybody. What do you believe your... Can you hear me, Bob?
No.
You can't?
Sure.
Okay. What do you believe the role is for yourself and the others on the Charter Review Committee?
Um, well, what it seems like, and this is from, you know, really trying to understand the town, would be to review the entire charter, to see if it's still working for the town the way that we think that it should be working. I would see it as something that we would be reaching out to various stakeholders to get their input about, you know, like when we were talking about X Committee, to talk to people who have been a part of that, to find out if the way the charter is set up for that committee works for them, and then make recommendations for potential changes or keeping things the same. That's sort of what I understand, but, like I said, I am new here, so I have not been here for the last, I wasn't here for the last review, but...
That was a great answer. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Peter?
Thank you for your interest.
Thank you.
Mary?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. I think you've answered my questions.
Okay.
You seem pretty straightforward. I appreciate you coming in, and we're not gonna do them this week, because we, we still haven't kinda got to it. We're gonna do them next week, the appointments, so you should find out next week, okay?
Okay.
Thank you so much for coming.
Do you want me to come back?
No, you don't have to come back. We'll let you know. You'll get a thing from us.
Okay.
All right?
All right.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
All right. Do you have Affordable Trust? Is there anybody here from the Affordable Trust?
Trust?
Yeah. Affordable Housing Trust.
Okay.
Hello.
Hello.
Welcome.
Hi.
All right. So this is Sandra Cormier.
Yes.
And she's here. I have her, I have the letter from the board, and I have her letter of interest, so...
And they're all gung-ho for her.
They're all gung-ho for her, yeah.
All right. You wanna tell us a little bit about yourself and why you decided to serve on the Housing Trust?
Yep. Again, my name's Sandra Cormier. I've lived here since 2002, but I'm from the area. I was born in Buzzards Bay, born at Toby Hospital. I have free time, and I think affordable housing is very important and needed, and I understand that the board, this committee hasn't met in a while, and so I wanna volunteer my time to see if the town can get back on track and maybe add some affordable housing and do what they can to help people in their housing issues.
Awesome. Any questions of the board?
No, I'll defer to Jim, as Jim basically, you know, has been working with the Affordable Housing Trust recently.
Okay.
No, we, we met, and it was the last week. Sandy attended, along with Missy Dysec, who also is interested, and, like I said, it's, it'll be a motivated group, and I think it would be a good appointment for the committee.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay.
All right. You have anything, Peter?
No, I'm just curious about the status. This is to Jim, I guess. How many members do you have presently?
We have three, 'cause it's supposed to be five.
Yeah.
We have three.
Okay.
Sandy put in, it'll be four, and if we appoint another person, which hopefully that'll come up soon, it'll be a full board.
Yeah.
And it's nice to have a full board to operate.
Yeah. Absolutely.
All right. Okay. A motion?
Okay. I move that we appoint Sandra Cormier to the, as a member to the Affordable Housing Trust for a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2021.
Seconded by Mary, seconded by Alan. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? It's unanimous. Five zero zero. Thank you very much. Now, you can...
If I could just ask, from what I read online, it said that, like, an annual report was given to the Board of Selectmen for previous years, when there was activity in this group, and I didn't see anything online, so I didn't know if that's available. And there's also a new housing production plan, I believe, that came up in our meeting that will be online?
That's, that's not approved yet, but...
Okay.
I'll send you a copy, now that you're a member.
All right. Just trying to get up to date. Okay.
So you have to get sworn in, so you'll need to go to our office and get your paperwork and take it downstairs and get sworn into Clerk's Office, okay?
Okay.
All right?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Give them time tomorrow, though. Don't just go right in, in the first thing in the morning, 'cause they'll, they'll have to get all this stuff back.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is hearings, license and permits, and this, we have a couple of show cause hearings for the following packaged goods, Wareham Liquors and Liquor Locker. I'd like to have Wareham Liquors come up first, please.
Moved over the hearing.
And the police, as well. Anybody who's gonna testify, also come up, please. All right. So if you're, let's have moved over in the hearing by Peter, seconded by, by Alan. All in favor, excuse me, roll call. Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Patrick, yes. It's open. Could you all rise, and could counsel swear them in, please? I'm gonna give testimony.
Please stand right here. Swear, I'll give a little proof of my innocence, if you'd like. Thank you very much, Peter.
All right. Thank you. All right. First, I'm gonna have the police present their case, their side of the story, and then you'll get to, to thing. You'll also get some time to ask questions, okay? All right. Could you fill us in on what happened?
Yes. On July 23rd, 2019, approximately 3 o'clock in the afternoon, I was in the parking lot of Wareham Liquors, when I saw a vehicle pull up into the parking lot. Young female, not appearing to be of age, entered the store, exited the store with a small plastic bag with what appeared to be alcoholic beverage. I did find out that the girl was only 20 years old at the time. I conducted a motor vehicle stop. She did have a six-pack of beer in the, in the car with her. When asked where she got it, it was Wareham Liquors, and I asked her if she had shown an ID, and she said she did not. Went back and spoke with Danny. He said the female had come in, he said he had sold to her, and at that time, had not provided an ID for her.
Okay. All right. Does any of the board have questions? Go ahead, Alan.
Just for clarification, Dean, this particular location is the one on the CVS Plaza or the one on Main, the other one on Main Street?
It's, I'm sorry. It's CVS Plaza, 419 Main Street.
Okay. Um, I'm a little disappointed, only because we've talked to you before, not so much for violation, but when you came in and took over, I think it was the old Hilltop TV license, the liquor store license, you know? It was...
I'm the new owner, so like...
No, it was the jug, when you bought, you bought the jug shop, right?
Yep.
And she had been up twice in front of us before.
Then they're not in the CVS Plaza, though.
She, he's in the CVS Plaza.
It's common ownership.
Yeah, they own them both now.
I understand. What I'm talking about is the Hilltop, I believe originally moved down to the CVS Plaza.
That was the previous owner.
Oh, that was the previous owner, yeah.
Correct. That's what I'm trying to get at. You know, so we talked about the move and change and everything else, so I'm hoping you gotta be more careful in the future, 'cause we, you know, we had the issue with the jug shop, which isn't yours right now, but we're trying to clean this up and keep it clean, so I don't have a lot of tolerance anymore.
Okay. Jim, any questions?
Have we had any offenses there in the last year?
This is the first time in seven years.
Peter?
No questions. They've, as far as I know, they've been clean since I've been on the board, and that location has not had any violations in the seven years I've been here.
Mary?
Uh, I have no questions right now.
All right. So what do you, how do you wanna answer this?
Yeah. My name's Matthew Porter. I'm the attorney for Wareham Liquors. So certainly, there's no disputes of the case or the facts whatsoever.
So that you are fine, you're agreeing to the facts of the case?
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you.
Sorry. So I would just point out that Ms. Patel's operated this store for the last seven years, so it's thousands upon thousands of transactions. They've had no violations whatsoever. He takes his job very seriously. I think they have, their record speaks for itself. Everybody that works there is tip-certified. They have a scanner system in place, so certainly, they, they take, you know, a fair amount of measures to ensure that this does not happen. Unfortunately, under these circumstances, Mr. Patel was under the mistaken assumption that he had identified this woman before. That obviously was not the case, so I think it was a mistake that he made, but, you know, his record of the past seven years, I, I think, you know, justifies another chance with them, you know, moving forward.
Okay. Do you have anything you wanna say yourself?
No.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
I wanna just say, trust your scanner. If you have one, use it. Never an issue if you use the scanner.
I got a bunch of fake IDs that they're adding.
So it works, but I think these guys also understand there's a human element that comes to it. So a scanner can be in place, but it also has to be that person, so it's a matter of using the scanner and making sure...
Just use a scanner, and then they will have no issue. Scan every time. You're good to go.
Just do what the Red Sox do, card everyone.
That usually works. Then you'll never get caught.
It's true.
Gonna sting again. Anybody else have any questions? So since, since you have agreed to the facts, then I guess I can close the hearing and we'll deliberate. I'm asking for somebody to make a motion to close the hearing.
Close the hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Alan, it's seconded by Peter. Alan, roll call. Jim?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Yes.
Mary? Me, yes. So the hearing is closed. What's your pleasure, gentlemen?
Same as usual.
Gentlemen, sorry.
First offense, we've been giving two days.
Two days.
Two-day suspension, midweek.
Have something in mind? You gotta pick it out on the calendar, please?
Uh, we used to have a calendar that hung up the last time we did one of these, but...
I can give you one on my phone, if you want.
Yeah, we'll...
When you're looking to do it?
We'll go to the device.
Go to the device, 'cause that's always works.
I've got the calendar right here. You got one? Yeah.
All right. So you got any days in mind?
I think you'd wanna...
Well, when did it happen? During the week?
July 23rd. It was probably during the week.
Yeah, 'cause you...
It was a Tuesday night.
Typically, we're doing the week, if it's the week, we've been doing the week.
Tuesday. Correct. Just depends, you know, we've, we've tightened this up, and we've gotten a little more aggressive, because...
Okay.
Whether it's a first or whatever, we're, you know, we're supposed to be putting out a...
What are you suggesting? What are the dates you're suggesting?
Well, it depends if you wanna be harsh or you wanna be lenient. You wanna be harsh, it should be a weekend.
It should be a weekend.
If not, then pick two days in the week.
I think the last guys didn't do it during the week. I'm pretty sure. We, if it was, if it was during the week, we did the week, the last time, and it was on the weekend, we did the weekend.
The last one we did, we had a couple offenses, so we were much more aggressive.
Well, yeah, that one was, that was a different set of circumstances, though. This is the first offense, so...
I know.
I think we've had three first offenses, and we've been very consistent in giving them two days off during the week.
I think we did. I think it was during the weekend.
Yeah, it's been Tuesday, Wednesdays.
During the week, and we, we said if you have to come back in front of us, you're not gonna like it very much, so don't do it again.
Exactly.
And then we did follow through.
The second time around, you are not gonna like.
Yeah. I just, I just wanna make a point that, you know, whether it's a first offense, in 10 years, one year, whatever, one offense is not acceptable, because that one person going out there could do horrible damage to somebody else.
Oh, no question.
You know, and I worked as a liquor store when I was way back, and, but it doesn't matter much, but we were instructed how to do it and everything else, and it was a very high-volume store, Blanchard Liquors and Harrison out, and we never had an issue, because it was, the managers, they were right on us to make sure it was done and done right. So I don't have a lot of tolerance for this.
All right. Well, somebody give me a couple of days, please.
October 1st and 2nd.
October 1st and 2nd.
And a Wednesday. Tuesday, Wednesday.
Is that okay? October 1st and 2nd?
Yeah.
Can somebody make the motion, please?
So may.
Second.
Motion made by Alan, seconded by Peter. Any other discussion?
Well, we just need to let the, the owner know that you're gonna have to post on your door that you're closed those days, and the reason why you're closed, which is suspension of license. That's one of the things we require, so you're gonna have to put that on your door, a sign.
Okay.
Is that something we've required?
That's, we cried at every time, yes.
She cried.
All right. So that's what you gotta do, and you'll be closed on October 1st and 2nd, and, and can I have a vote, please? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? It's unanimous. So it's a five zero zero. So that should tell you something. Now, next, don't do it again, okay? Under any circumstances, use that card reader, card everybody, do whatever you gotta do, but don't let it happen again, because it just won't work out well for you.
I have a question.
And you have two stores, and you do, you know, as far as I know, you've done a very good job, but you need to just make sure you don't get caught again.
I think that, you know, and what Mr. Patel has pointed out, and we're also representing the, the next violation as well, is there seems to be a prevalence of, of fake IDs, and these guys are taking all their measures, they're using their scanners, both of them have stacks of these.
I see that. He's got a collection.
But every time, you know, they confiscate those and they reach out to the police department, you know, the answer always is, you know, just keep them for your records. There's really not a whole lot that we can do with them, so...
Right.
Chase them down.
On their end, though, you know, I mean, I think that, you know, it is difficult to see, you know, that there's no, you know, follow-up to some of these, you know, younger individuals using these, because it doesn't seem to be any ramifications. If they go in and they get their, you know, they get the, pulled from them, they're just gonna grab another ID and go back in the store.
Well, but, you know, if they're fake IDs, chances are it's not them, so it's hard to chase them down.
No, they've looked up a lot of these guys, just, you know, using social media, and they're using, you know, real names, so I, I think if, they understand the responsibility comes along with it, you know, but they wanna be able to work with the police department as well, to try to stop, you know, the continuous use of those.
That's fine. Okay.
Well, I just wanted to say, people have been using fake IDs in Wareham since, at least, but going back to the time I was 16 years old. You know, it, it's still incumbent upon the clerk to check the ID, and in this instance, that didn't happen. So that, that's what you need to do, is just check every ID. And if I stop by there later tonight, I expect to get carded. That's, that's the level you need to do, and nobody's ever gonna mistake me for a teenager, but still, just don't take the chance.
I don't know. You look kinda young to me.
Mr. Chairman, I just do wanna point out that, obviously, on a, on a night like tonight, our, our officers and detectives are doing a fantastic job, and they're focusing on this, because I gotta tell you, we have a lot going on in this town, and for them to take their time and be here means a lot, so they're taking it very seriously. I want that to be known.
Oh, yeah. There's no question in not fooling around.[1347.43] This is, you know, we went for a long, long time, we didn't have anything, and now we're getting them all the time. You know what I mean? Really, these guys are focused on this, they're serious about it, and they're not gonna let it happen. So just know that they're gonna be there around somewhere. So, all right, thank you. Thank you very much. Have a nice night. Next up is Liquor Locker. Come on down. And could I have the police department? And, uh, we're gonna do the same thing here, same, same lawyer, I love it. All right, you guys, if you could stand and raise your hands.
Do you wanna open the hearing first?
Wait, let me open the hearing first. Go ahead, could you, uh...
Move to open the hearing.
Peter moved to open the hearing, seconded by Mary. Roll call, Alan, Jim.
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Yes.
Mary, Patrick, yes. Okay, hearing's open. Now stand. Could you swear them in, please?
Please raise your right hand, you swear, tell the truth, all truth, nothing but the truth, so hope you got.
I do.
Thank you, may be seated.
All right, so could the police department, please, state your name and then go on and tell us what, what the circumstances are, please?
Yes, my name's Brian Whalen, I'm a detective with the Wareham Police Department. I'll give you a summary of the, of an incident that occurred on August 15th, 2019. Approximately 6:50 PM, I was in my Unmarked vehicle, I observed a sedan pull into the parking lot of the Liquor Locker. The registered owner was known to me to be underage, and it appeared that there was also two underage individuals in the vehicle. Based on my observations, I set up surveillance across the street in the McDonald's parking lot. A few minutes later, that same operator who was under the age of 21 exited the establishment, Liquor Locker, with a brown paper bag in the appearance of a pint-size of alcohol. Shortly thereafter, I conducted a motor vehicle stop, had conversation with all the occupants in the vehicle. The occup, the operator of the vehicle didn't have a license, said he bought a bottle of water. I searched the vehicle, found a bottle of Hennessy in the vehicle, went back to the store, spoke to the clerk, provided a description of the person I just dealt with. He said he did sell a bottle of alcohol to him, and he did not card him. He mentioned that he's trying to get better with the system, but he confirmed that he did not card the individual, and also provided me a receipt of the transaction. That's essentially the facts.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board, please?
First question I have is, in the last two years, is this the second offense?
I believe it is. Yes.
No, it is not.
Well, I'm checking with the police department.
In the last two years, it is.
There may have been a previous owner violation, but under their watch, no?
July 6th, 2017.
Is it under the same ownership, do you know?
It was a, incident similar, and it was the same actual sales clerk.
Yeah. So it was in July 6th in 17, you owned it in 2017?
2017? We didn't own the store. We bought it in March of 2018, sir.
You bought it in March of 2018?
The owner, um, the clerk, I guess, he's been with the previous owner for like seven, eight years.
But it was the same clerk?
Employee of the previous owner, correct?
He's been with the previous owner for, I think, seven or eight years.
Okay.
I got a question, then.
All right, um, you have a question? Go ahead.
Yes, is that clerk still employed?
Next, they, of course, we don't, you know, we don't take this serious, you know, this is, like, we, we do have a dedicated phone that just sits at the POS, that anybody comes in, you know, with the out-of-state ID, we don't take. Majority of them are in Massachusetts. So the previous owner did have a system in place, he said it works fine every time you scan it, if, okay. There was, you know, I checked up, one, one younger kid came in and it didn't look right, so I did some checking and the system wasn't reliable, so we ended up getting a new system. And this was recommended by a situated police department, that they used it, it is connected to them, so it's a lot more accurate than the system was used by the previous owner. And this one does, if you scan any fake IDs, it does catch it a lot better.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other questions? Jim?
So you, you said you upgraded your scanning system? That recently?
About six months ago, I think. Yeah, and these are all the fake IDs, and we had, you know, a few more's too, but it's, it's pretty much, it's a, the reason I like this more, 'cause it's, it's always updating itself, it's a cloud-based system, so any new fake IDs that's gonna come in the market, we're, we're pretty sure this is gonna catch it. But the previous owner was just, whatever they had, they had. So any new fake IDs that were coming out, it wasn't scanning it. So this, we just leave it at the phone, you know, we just leave it at the register, it scans every time, and it, it does, does a great job of scanning fake IDs.
Okay, Mary?
We have, after this incident, we have a strict policy, we have a big sign out at, at the front of the register, we don't take out of-state IDs, 'cause chances of out-of-state IDs being fake are a lot higher, I guess, than Massachusetts ID, but that, it's not true, I guess, you know, you still have a lot of Massachusetts that...
So, are you admitting to the facts?
Yeah, so, yeah, there's no dispute on the facts. Mr. Patel hasn't had any violations since he's taken over the store. You know, unfortunately, they took over that store, you know, there was an employee that had been there for an extended period of time that was vouched for by the seller. We were certainly not aware of any previous violations. That clerk is no longer employed by Mr. Patel. Every employee there is now tip-certified and trained. So it's just a wake-up call for them, you can have the right system in place, you can have the scanner in place, but you have to have the right training in place for employees because here, this individual had every opportunity to scan that identification and, and didn't do it. And so, he's no longer, you know, employed, but I, I think, you know, going forward, these guys understand you gotta, you know, drill this into each and every employee, continue with, you know, tip certification and continue with in-house training, because without that, it, it doesn't do a whole lot of good. But, first violation for these guys.
All right, Peter?
Yeah, I'm glad to hear you upgraded the employee as well.
All right, is there anybody else wanna ask questions or anything? All right, can I have you close the hearing, please?
Motion to close the hearing.
Motion made by Peter, seconded by Alan. Roll call, Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Peter? Mary?
Yes.
Patrick, yes. Okay, hearing closed. What's your pleasure, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen?
I'd say the same thing, October 1st and 2nd.
Okay.
Sign on the door.
October 1st and 2nd, sign on the door.
That's my motion.
All right, that's a motion, seconded by Alan. Okay, motion made by Peter, seconded by Alan. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Okay, so make sure that sign's up there and you're closed on the 1st and the 2nd, okay? All right.
Thank you to the police officers as well for coming in.
And you know what, and I wanna personally thank all the police officers who worked so hard to, to help police this issue, because it has been an ongoing issue, and it's only recently, you know, since, since you really put a push on. And it wasn't the officers, I think the chief's really been leading the show. He really wants this to be a real piece, centerpiece. And you guys have all taken it seriously, and I really appreciate it very much. All right.
Thank you.
Uh, next up is town business, discussion and vote on whether to recommend or not to recommend town, town meeting votes. Okay, Saul?
I got the thing here.
Uh, you got the thing? Okay.
Yep. Article 1's the feasibility study for the new, new public safety facility.
Yep, is there a, is there a number attached to that, or it's just...
Yeah, it's all, it's all warrant articles, too.
No, is there a dollar amount attached to that feasibility study?
Right now, we've got a $107,275.35 in that account. We should get another disbursement at least from the Commonwealth for the cannabis exercise.
So is it, so what is it gonna cost, the feasibility study? Do we need to put money in there? Are we appropriating some money?
Well, we're gonna set aside the, we're gonna take the money out that we put in. We'll go, we'll get some, uh, once we've got the committee together, we'll put an R, you put the RFP together for the feasibility study.
We'll find out the exact amount.
Right, then, plus, what we wanna do as part of this, we also want to do a survey and get a, a commercial appraisal of the current police department location, to have an understanding of the value of that.
Great, that's terrific.
Right, that's all in the article.
All right, so, does anybody have anything they wanna say?
Yes, um, so you're asking for the article with no dollar amount attached to it?
And, um... This is just authorizing the feasibility study and, and the committee, right? Is that correct?
No, the motion, when you have the final motion, this is the, the warrant, is the, the warning that we will be talking about this matter and taking funds from the, uh...
But you have no dollar amount?
Within the article, you don't need to have a dollar amount, no.
You just, it's open-ended?
When we do the actual motion, whatever we have for the funds available at that time, you'll see that in the motion, she'll say, let's say, I'll take an example, $150,000. It'll be transfer $150,000, and then...
You will have a figure.
Right, when you're, when you're at town meeting, roughly.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Right, could I have a motion?
Move to recommend passage of Article 1 feasibility study.
All right, motion made by Peter, seconded by Alan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Next up?
Next up is authorization for special legislation. This is for providing municipal insurance to the widow of Officer Chris Argentinos. They've run into something where she's not fully covered, and there's a lot of out-of-pockets, so there's a need to petition the legislature to authorize us to be able to pay in full.
I remember we had done this once before, for something else.
Favorable action.
We did this, move favorable action for Alan, and a second?
Second.
Second by Mary. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, 5-0-0. Next?
Next up, approve and fund fiscal year 20 capital plan?
I would hold off on this.
You don't have any numbers or anything yet?
No, and the capital planning's meeting on the 19th as well, so...
Okay. Uh, next is a transfer of free cash?
We don't know what free cash is yet, so...
Right, you won't know until the end, but just so that everyone understands what we do with that, I'm trying to see if I can find the, find the numbers for it, right? Right now, we've got just under $3.5 million in the stabilization fund. Our, the town policy calls for at least $100,000 to go in there to keep it with, within 5% of our operating budget. OPEB, we have just under $1 million, I think it's $1,054,000, and you put roughly 25% of your free cash after you've deducted some of the other amounts into it. Last year, we put $300,000. Our OPEB liability is greater than $110 million at this point, so, it's not gonna solve it overnight, but we have to start putting some funds towards it.
Obviously. Okay, next?
Uh, next is fiscal year 19 unpaid bills.
We have none at this time.
So we'll hold off. Article 6, peg access receipts to Wareham Community TV, this is the semi-annual appropriation we have to make under the Municipal Modernization Act, we have to...
I think we have a number for those two.
It's within the article.
Yeah, the number is $275,048.57.
Motion, please?
Sorry?
I need a motion for the...
Move, move. Move to recommend.
Motion was made by Alan, seconded...
You used that bad word.
Seconded by, yeah, don't use that word. Seconded by...
I'll use whatever I like.
We'll fix it, don't worry. Seconded by Peter. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Next?
Okay, next up, uh...
There's the collective bargaining agreements, the only one that we've spoken about so far is the Sargent's Union, and we have been meeting with, with all others. We've, we've come to a conclusion with...
We wait till we get a little...
Yeah, so I would think, um, next week, depending on whether some of them have ratified it, which I'll know later on this week, we might, we might need an executive session.
I actually have a tentative one scheduled for next week.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll see how it works out.
Right, and even if they haven't ratified it, if we believe, I might just ask for, you know, favorite, vote of the board with an exec...
All right.
Okay, so we'll skip that, then.
We'll skip that.
Uh, Article 8, solar pilot agreement.
We have that pilot agreement already.
You have the pilot agreement? It's, uh, it will be a 3.1 megawatt DC, um, project, $14,000 per megawatt DC, plus a one-time, $10,000 payment for our, our headaches in drafting the agreement. And the total, so that'll be $43,400 annually, escalating by 2.5%, and the value of that over the 20 years is $1,118,000.
Okay, uh, motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Alan, seconded by, seconded by Peter. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous.
Next up, transfer of McKinney-Vento funds to transportation revolving account.
That would be the school department, come on down. Come on down, school department. Come on down! You need free cash.
Hello?
Hello? All right, so this is, I know we do this all the time, and I, I know whatever, but...
Like twice a year.
There's a couple of articles here, so I figured you should come in and at least maybe explain it so everybody at home knows what's going on, too, you know?
Uh, the first would be the McKinney-Vento. Every year, we get money from the state for the homeless transportation. It goes back into the town's coffers. We would ask for it to be transferred to ours in the amount of $23,464. We will be using that to help offset purchasing of any buses and transportation.
Okay, motion, please?
Motion to recommend.
Motion to recommend by Peter, seconded by Mary. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. All right, I think they're up for the next one, too.
Yeah, next one is transfer of following money left remaining in following accounts to Wareham Public Schools Fund for Technology Maintenance and Equipment. Uh, there's a listing of a bunch of different items ranging from 50, about $52,000 down to $423.88.
So why don't you...
For prior projects.
Why don't you explain it so everybody at home knows what's going on?
Uh, this is money that the town has voted for past projects, or...
Is the balances in the accounts?
Balances, and what we would like to do is to put them together. It totals about $80,900. If we would have that amount, then what we would be able to do is some maintenance or larger purchases. In the last year and a half, we've really spent some time on some capital items in our buildings and upgrading. This would just help us continue.
Awesome. All right, any motion, please?
Move to recommend.
Motion to recommend, seconded by Mary. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just need some clarification on these. These were previously approved projects. So as such, are they part of the regular school budget, or are they separate and aside?
They're separate and aside.
And as we move them into this new category, will they become part of the regular school budget, or are they separate and aside?
No, they will not become part of the school budget, they'll still be separate and aside.
Okay, thank you.
So in other words, if they don't spend all this, they'll be back to reallocate it somewhere else, because it's not part of the regular budget?
You know, I didn't know if it was gonna be part of the regular budget...
Yep, that's a good question.
You know, compounding as we move along.
I think they're keeping it out for maintenance purpose, so, you know...
Right.
Which is what it was originally, it was maintenance money for various other things. I think there was a roof and some other things along the way, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Chairman and Madam Superintendent. Uh, just, selectmen, minister's question, spurred a question in my own mind. Were any of these five accounts borrowed funds originally?
Not to my knowledge, but I'm not sure.
Okay, I, I'd just recommend that, when it's convenient, just check to see whether any of them were funded by borrowing, because, uh, the, two things, the reuse of borrowed funds, uh, has some special limitations as to what those funds could be used for if put to another purpose, so it probably would be helpful to...
Okay.
Pin that one down. Thank you.
Okay, okay, I have a motion made, seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome. Next?
Next up, harbor services permit receipts reserved for appropriation.
These are ones we do every year.
Yeah, this is a $46,000 one.
Could I have a motion, please? This is harbor services money?
Recommend.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Alan, seconded by Mary. Any discussion?
Yeah, I, I had some question on if the project is completed already? Has it not been completed? Did we fund it, um, originally to be completed with the amount of money that we gave them?
For...
This is an additional amount for the $60,000 about the dock itself.
The, um...
Read the article, and it's kinda open-ended, and, um, so...
So those were completed, I don't have the final amount, I thought somebody from the department was gonna be here tonight, but they have been completed, that's the new, the peers that are out there, the little docks.
Right, right.
Uh, this is the, this is for the payment of it. So we borrowed the full amount, and this is the, uh, this is the annual payment, 'cause I think it's, uh...
Annual payment.
Right, so, I think the total cost is $420,000, and, um, you know, they, I thought it was gonna be up to a 10-year borrowing, but could be, I gotta look at it, could be an eight-year or something, 'cause $60,000 doesn't make sense on a 10-year for me on a $420,000 project.
The way I read it, I didn't see it as annual, I thought that was gonna be like completing the cost of the purchase.
No, you're, yeah.
So, you know, I didn't know, I didn't know where the monies came from, you bonded it out or borrowed it?
Right, so they borrowed for the original project to do, do it, and when you borrow for a project, what you do is band, so bond it, anticipation notes, yeah. And then, once that's done, we do the final bonding of it, and that's when you have your payments for the, which would be principal and interest, basically, when you, when you break it down.
So has it been bonded yet?
It should have, to, to know this payment right here, the $60,000, it should have been fully, 'cause I know the project's been completed. I'll check with the finance director on it, but...
Well, thank you.
I wish I had a direct answer, but...
Okay, so the first one... All right, you all set? All right, so that, the first one, the motion was on the, on the harvest transfer...
Right, the...
Transfer.
Number 11.
Right, number 11. So all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining?
Article 12's the onset, debt payment.
12's the peer, which we just talked about again, so could I have a motion on that?
To approve.
So moved for Alan.
Second.
Seconded by Peter. All, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Okay, next?
Next is community preservation.
Come on down.
Good evening, Sandy Slavin, Co-Chair and Treasurer. I do have representatives in the audience for the soccer and the Shangri-La, and they can come up when you're ready to talk to them.
Bring them up, absolutely. Let them come up and give us the, the whole story, you know?
Right, the first one is, the first article, though, is to return unused funds from completed projects.
So let's do that one first.
Uh, we've got $13,384.88 to Community Preservation Affordable Housing Fund Account from the Agawam Unit Number 51, Fall 2014 Town Meeting Article Number 25. And the second, uh, amount sought to be returned is $57,241.44 to the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund Account from, first, the Auditorium Roof, Fall 2017 Town Meeting Article. Uh, second is Father Bill's, Fall 2016 Town Meeting Article. Third is onset boat ramps, Spring 2015 Town Meeting Article. And fourth is the Historic District Map, Spring 2011 Town Meeting Article. So thank you for cleaning these up.
Okay, could I have a motion?
Or trying to, trying to get Town Meeting to clean them up.
Well, no, they had to be completed for us to remove them, so we've now got confirmation that these have all been completed and can be returned.
Yep.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Alan, seconded by Peter. Any discussion? Go ahead, yeah?
I noted that the Affordable Housing Trust money goes back into...
The reserve.
For, for affordable housing.
Yes, they, yes.
Now, the other three, they're not going back into the specific area, but into a general fund.
'Cause they were issued from a general fund.
I, I thought I saw one that, um, was issued from a specific fund, and, um, so if it comes out of a specific fund, either for recreation, then it has to go back into it.
Yes.
Um, I think how you've been wording them, which is, not you in particular, but the I think how you've been wording them, which is, not you in particular, but the committee, is that it says "from either/or," so we really don't know where it comes from, it just comes...
You'll have to give me the specific article you're talking about.
It's those articles there.
I know.
I had to go back like to 2015 and 2017, because they're all over.
The article would have said "for the category of something-something," which is not the funding source.
Correct.
So it said "for the category of, say, historical preservation using undesignated funds." Every one of these articles specifically said "undesignated funds," except for the Agawam Unit 51. That came from specifically Affordable Housing Reserve, and that's where the money has to go back.
Okay. I thought there was one other that did, that also did, but I didn't write it down, so.
No.
If it wasn't a large sum of money, I'm not going to debate it.
Definitely checked every one of them, that they did not come from anything other than the undesignated component, yes.
I want it over with. Yeah, you all set? Everybody set? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, 500. Next?
Again, if there is an issue with this, you can always fix it in the motion. If you do find something subsequently in, with this, you can always fix it in the motion. Because we'll just consider this a quote screwing his error unquote. That covers a lot of sins.
Yeah, let's go.
Okay, Shangri-La Playground Build.
Hello there.
The CPC has approved the proposal for a $220,000 CPA grant request for recreation. It was submitted by Mr. Sullivan and the Open Space Committee, and Carol has been a driving force for that, so I'll have her speak to this, answer your questions on this grant request.
Hello?
Hello. The Shangri-La Playground Build, as we've discussed before, services a very large population. There are approximately 1300 to 1500 single-family homes between White Island shores, Wareham Lake shores, Shangri-La, and the Hind Todeskis. We have worked to put together a plan to build a playground to service these children, because playgrounds are really important. There are a lot of young families moving in with very young children or children on the way that will benefit from this, from this for their entire life. We're working very hard with Higgins Security to do security in the playground as well as lighting. I will be reaching out to EverSource to see what they have to offer as far as community programs go for helping us put in wired lighting. Or with a solar panel company to see if we can do something with solar, because we will need to power not just lighting for the playground, but we will also need to power security cameras. Solar-powered security cameras, I'm sure, are rather expensive and can't be guaranteed to work. Because of the isolation, we need to have good security in that playground. We will also be keeping the gate at the top of the street for the driveway locked after sunset until sunrise the next day during the summer. After summer's gone, the kids have gone back to school weekends, it'll be closing earlier as it gets dark earlier. We have a tree company that has come up with a proposal to do tree removal and brush clearing to open up the driveway, to make better accessibility into the playground. It'll give better visibility. It'll also eliminate a lot of the windstorm damage that can happen to the playground. So we have just recently received that proposal. It will be done by volunteers. It will be up to 25 volunteers going in, cutting up what the tree company takes down, and it will all be done by local town residents to help with that. That's a large contribution to this. I will get a figure for that before it's over. There's also other projects in the works with building a pavilion, so that we have a place where parents can actually sit in the shade instead of in the boiling sun, because there is no shade in that playground. So we're going to put in a pavilion. It'll give families a chance to be able to come down and spend several hours, instead of being there for half an hour because it's so hot you can't stay. Anything else I should address?
We know that anybody who's been out there after a rainstorm, it's a puddle. There are two stormwater drainage systems that dump into that play area. Part of our proposal is to work with an engineer to come up with stormwater mitigation programs like rain gardens or something like that. But we know we must take care of the stormwater, or we're going to have puddles again. And so that's definitely part of our component, is take sure, make sure that that playground stays dry. You talked security, you talked about the rain. Community active, activity, I believe you've got two groups of people willing to support the playground from the Shangri-La population, a neighborhood watch, and a playground committee. So there's a lot of interest and support in the neighborhood for this particular playground.
I've got a question. Who are the two gentlemen you brought up with you?
They're from the soccer field.
The soccer field.
They're the next one.
Oh, okay. So they're on deck, okay, all right.
They're on deck.
You know, Shangri-La, I go up there, I've been up there so many, so often, it's crazy, because I do a lot of work up there and stuff. And I got to tell you, that place has been a dust bowl and a water pit for a long, long time, so this is really due, you know, as far as I'm concerned. And the nice thing is, is that, you know, for our 225,000, we get a lot of man-hours from volunteers that add to it, which really, you know, sort of helps the town out a great deal, so.
Yep.
This is good. You know, this is good when the community comes together to make stuff happen. This is good.
Yes.
And people outside of the community are offering to volunteer to come down and help us out, because it's for the kids.
Yeah, this is good when this happens, you know.
So we're looking at two specific play structures, one from a 2 to 5, and one from 5 to 7 plus, plus a brand-new relocated basketball court. So, I mean, we're adding the court for an older group of children, so that's the plan.
Awesome.
The plan is also to put boulders along the fence, the fences in the playground, at the bottom of the driveway, because any time anybody's brakes can let go, car hits a chain-link fence, it's going to take the fence down. We don't want to risk that, so to be proactive, we're going to have the town install some boulders like they did at Hoopie.
And one more thing. Going back several years, in the open space plan, it's always said you can't access the playground from Sunset Boulevard. So one of the things that we're planning to do is put in a set of stairs coming down from the top from Sunset, so that population can reach to the playground fairly quickly. And that's been mentioned in three separate open space plans, so we're addressing that one here also.
Stuff coming down that hill.
And I'm now done.
Stuff coming down that hill.
Talking about tearing it is one of the solutions, because then you can come down with a stroller or kids on bikes, because it'd be, you know, flat surfaces where they can just drop off one step at a time.
Pushing them down the hill doesn't work anymore?
Well, we still have the sledding pad. We still have our sledding pad.
You know, in the old days, we just push them down the hill.
Oh, yeah.
All right, could I have a motion, please?
Motion to recommend.
Motion to recommend by Peter, seconded by Jim. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, 500. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next up would be the...
Soccer field, west field.
Soccer field.
There we go.
This was one that I, I worked on myself, in fact.
So, the Wareham Youth Soccer Club came before CPC and is asking for $40,000 of a $70,000 project to build five soccer fields up at Charlotte Furnace next to the softball fields. And I'll let the gentleman speak to the project.
Good evening, I'm Bob Katerius, President of Wareham Youth Soccer. How you doing?
Roy.
Roy Vugin, Vice President, Wareham Soccer.
We're asking for support to build five soccer fields, to reinvigorate the field itself and expand a little so we can fit our entire program up there. Part of that construction is creating a parking lot across some of the existing field and creating a new opening, and delineating that parking lot for safety concerns. And that includes opening a fence, putting in a security gate. We're also looking to buy some soccer equipment, some new goals, and miscellaneous equipment for the fields, and to purchase a shed or a container of some sort to have the facilities there.
You know, that, that was supposed to have soccer fields in it originally.
Originally, yes.
The original design had three baseball fields, sort of back-to-back, and then there were soccer fields as well, which were included in the project. And, you know, the only thing we were able to get done was, the fields we got, we had, if I remember right, we had the Army Corps of Engineers come down and spread mulch, and we finally got enough money at Town Meeting one time to put in the sprinklers that are there, you know?
Yeah.
And that's as far as we ever could get. It was a beautiful plan to really have a nice thing. So it's nice to see the plan start to keep going, you know?
We estimated our budget, though the project cost at $70,000, and we're asking $40,000. And that's because we have already started work, we've put in a lot of money from our organization, we've had a lot of in-kind support along the way, which has been great.
Yeah, that's good, see town gets a benefit.
And we got that irrigation system up and running, which is wonderful.
And for history, one of the very first projects of CPC was to fund the drilling of a well and the installation of the irrigation sites. So where CPC has been involved in that site for a long time. So this is great to finally see it being used.
You know what's neat is that, you know, so you're going to go in and you're going to use your manpower, and you've done a lot of stuff, and we're going to give some money, and it's all going to happen. And you know, I know it'll be taken care of after that, just like the girls' softball's taking care of their stuff. You know, if, if, if we went in there and just did it, and it was just done, and nobody took ownership to it, it would end up looking like a dust bowl or a pit or something, and it'll never, because that's how it turns out. But because it's being done by an organization and everything, this is the best thing that can happen for the town.
And we have a great group of...
I know that it's a lot of work for you, but it's, it really means a lot.
Yeah, we have a great group of volunteers that have been putting a lot of time and energy into it.
A long time, so that's good.
And I want to thank you guys, Derek and Patrick, for, for being supportive upfront. Sounds great.
That's awesome. All right, any, any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, the one thing we want to clarify, especially through Sandy and them, is any time that it involves the, you guys doing the work on your own, using your own funds is great. No prevailing wage, no procurement, you're good. But as soon as it's the CPC funds, that's going to trigger prevailing wage, and it's also going to trigger procurement on it. So, you know, let's, we'll work together on it and just make sure that we, none of us get in trouble.
And we do have a valid...
It'll look good in off-pink, but not orange, so.
There is a valid agreement with the Town of Wareham and Wareham Youth Soccer. It's valid that they are, have the responsibility for the property, which is why Town is not doing the CPA grant. It's coming from youth soccer.
And we love having them there stepping up, you're filling a void that the town can't do, so it's awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, because you guys have been operating out of DeKes for a long time, right?
Yes, we have, yes.
It's kind of tough over there with the baseball field and everything.
Well, it's the baseball field, it's also the kids coming at lunch and using the circles.
Yeah, using the circles and all that, yeah.
But we've put our time and money trying to keep that for lives...
Well, you did a good job over there, though. I know some of my kids were in your program years ago, so. All right, so a motion made by Alan, seconded by Mary. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have one more?
I think I've got one more. I've got one more.
Tremont Nail Cleanup Interest Payment.
Oh, yeah, cleanup Tremont Nail Interest Payment.
Yes.
We know what that is.
Okay. The number came directly from Mr. Foster. We don't have principal yet, this is just an interest.
It's the band, it's the interest for a band.
Yes.
Interest for a band.
Okay, motion to approve, motion approved, please?
So moved.
Motion approved.
Motion made by Peter, seconded by Alan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Just through you, we have a band on it, it hasn't been bonded. When will these things become bonded?
As soon as they've been paid off, as soon as we've made the last payments on them, then the finance director's the one that goes out for bonding. And sometimes they'll come in front of you, you'll be sworn in, you'll have to pay, you'll have to sign off on them and stuff.
And that's the last payment on what?
What, what's due on the project, because you can't, so if they say, if you have any outstanding invoices, you can't permanently bond it, because you still, you don't have the finalized number. So once the project's done, you've paid all the invoices, that's when you can go out for the, for the permanent amount.
Thank you.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I'll see you for the sewer.
Sewer, yeah. That'll be fun.
Article 17, amend zoning by law, Article 3, subsection 340.6, commercial uses. This is the one to add towing for service to the definition of motor vehicle service.
Come on down.
Good evening.
Hello? Do you want to explain that to us?
Sure. The definition of motor vehicle service does not include towing, and there was a question as to how that could be fit into the, into the definition. So what we're doing is we're saying towing for service, to distinguish it from just a towing in a storage yard, but, but towing for the purpose of servicing the vehicles.
Okay, so it certainly should. Okay. Motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Alan, seconded by Peter. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, 500.
Next up, amend zoning by law, Article 10, minimum landscape buffer.
This, this table is in the, is a landscape buffer between different types of uses, and what we've done is we've made it consistent for the, all uses within the same categories.
Right. Motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Alan, seconded by Peter. Any discussion?
I'd, I'd just like to make a statement that this is, you're dealing basically with the industrial and commercial, in which office is one part of commercial, is that correct?
That's correct. It's distinguished in the table as a separate use type.
Right. Sometimes industrial can be, you know, have some offensive type activities related to it. So I do question industrial 10-foot buffer from commercial. That's just a specific thing. I think one or two people questioned that, too, at the, one of the two boards that looked at it.
What this doesn't do is, is, is reduce the setback requirements in the zoning districts. All it does is reduce the amount of landscaping in between the, the different uses, so...
Do two separate adjacent lots?
That's correct.
Not front, not just front landscaping. Are we talking about side setback, or is this just front?
Side and, and rear.
Right, so the 10-foot would be, you could have someone, you know, making widgets here and another person manufacturing here, creating, you know, noise and this and that in industrial area, and then you could have a bank next door, correct?
That's correct.
So...
I think you can just look at our industrial parks and see that.
That's just my only question, you know, it's just a personal insight into it.
We have other performance standards on noise, vibration, smells, that also cover the requirements on, on how you manage to mitigate the impact of the particular type of development.
We impose them, which we don't have much chance, we don't have a lot of input on that. So this is just a statement on that, it's just my personal...
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. You're abstained? 401.
Okay. Next up, this would be Article 19?
19.
Men's zoning by law, Article 3, new subsection 399. This would effectively put a one-year moratorium on social cannabis, social consumption marijuana establishments.
Okay, motion, please.
Beforehand. Rich, did you get an answer back from the AG's office? You were going to check on that.
I did put a call in, but I haven't heard back yet.
Okay.
Thank you.
We can just, man, it's something that we'd want to do if we could do it, so, at least in my opinion.
Yeah, just because they have an issued guidelines on it...
Ends up that we can't do it, then it ain't going to happen. The AG will throw it out, and that'll be the end of it. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, if, certainly if I got a word back saying ill-advised, a motion to indefinitely postpone or some other action of that sort could be taken.
Yeah, it could come forward.
Right, I just want to clarify, the thing you're saying, the thing we want to do is not the social consumption, it's this article.
Correct, which is a moratorium.
Right, we want to do the moratorium.
Yes, yeah. Oh, yeah, no, I, I hope that was... Yeah, just that wasn't misconstrued.
Chloe.
Yeah, no, you make sure you get that right. Yeah, we want to do the moratorium, that's what we would like to see, at least. But wait a minute, hold on, before I say that. Motion?
Before we do that, I just want to clarify, I didn't bother to call Wareham Week, the article last time, at our last meeting, it said the Attorney General was accepting moratoriums for this. That was not true. That was misquoted. The Attorney General has made any decision on anything, and Mr. Bowen did not say that either. I'll just make it clear, we were quoted.
Okay, so could you make a motion, please?
I'll make a motion for approval.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Seconded by Jim. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Now I can tell you that we want it. Because all five of us have voted.
This was some background information, now, this past week, the, what happened at the State House was that they did not make any vote or any decision either on delivery or social consumption. They were supposed to do it this week, and they backed away, and they've made no decision at all. So it's still way up in the air.
Yep.
Well, you know, none of us can make a decision for anybody, we all have to make the vote before it happens. We're only one selectman, which is basically nothing unless we're sitting here deliberating.
That's right.
So, all right, next up. Especially when you're in Derek's office.
Yeah.
He wants me to say that again?
Yeah, you want me to say that again? You want me to speak that loud in the mic?
Okay, update zoning by law with already approved overlay district. This is simply to add the Tremont Nail Factory redevelopment overlay district to the table of existing overlay districts. overlay districts, that was something that...
Already existed, but it didn't get to the table.
It didn't, it didn't get into the table, so it's just to fix that and get it into the table where it belongs.
Motion to approve by Alan. Seconded by Jim. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Thank you so much. Next.
Next one, authorize the town to borrow up to three hundred and fifty thousand from the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust for the septic loan program.
Okay, we do this all the time. We do this and we, and the, and I got to tell you, this is going to be an important vote this time because we, we're, we're starting to enforce that people need to connect to the sewer, and that these things get fixed, that sewer septics get fixed. And a lot of people maybe not have the money. This is a program where they can go and borrow the money. Ultimately, what happens is the money gets added to your, your bill, your, onto your, as a lien on your property, and you pay it off over the course of time. So, it allows people who don't have any money to be able to, to get up to date and get these things done on their homes. So, this is an important thing. Could I have a motion, please? Motion to approve by Alan.
Second.
Seconded by Peter. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Next up.
Next up, article twenty-two, establish a stormwater management and illicit discharge by law.
Yes, all right, so we...
Before we speak to this, can we make sure, uh, Selectman Slavin does not speak to it? I don't need any more audits on this.
Just for clarification.
No, he can, he can speak to it.
Well, clarification to the public, when I was chair, not this last time, but the time before, like, four years ago, MS four, which is a stormwater management program that the federal government pushed through the state to the towns and cities, I basically at that time made a statement that was recorded and registered, basically, that I'd be happy to go ahead and approve the MS four requirements, as long as they told us what requirements we didn't have to enforce, since we didn't have any money for any of this, because they require twenty-five percent of your stormwater drains to be basically maintained, serviced, et cetera. I also sent a letter off to Secretary Bump, the auditor, saying this is an unfunded mandate under the nineteen seventy-four, uh, law that had to do with the two and a half percent increase allowed, and there'd be no unfunded mandates at that time. Obviously, I lost on both of them, and I'm being blamed now for the audit because I complained saying we weren't going to do it. So, the reason we're really being audited is we're probably one of the key places where the water comes through us, right into the Buzzes Bay, et cetera, so we're an easy target. But, everybody gives me a hard time in calling it's Alan's fault.
Okay, so, to me, this is, uh, we voted, matter of fact, once upon a time to tell them to go pound sand. You might have seen that, the go pound sand vote that we took. Unfortunately, they have a lot of authority over us, and, you know, so we have to, we're going to have to do this whether we like it or not. Uh, this will end up costing the town money, there's not a question. It'll not only end up costing the town money, but this is the foot in the door. This will actually be like the town, state does, is they'll get their foot in the door, and then eventually they'll open the door a little more, and a little more, until the town is burdened by this thing. Uh, it's the nature of what they do. The stretch code is a, a, a prime example. They keep upgrading it now all the time, like I knew they would, uh, and we're kind of locked into it. And, uh, this is not going to be a good thing for the town, but unfortunately, we have no, no choice. It's as simple as that. Matter of fact, we were recently audited, and I, as I understand, it didn't go so good. And I don't mean audited financially, I'm talking as far as wastewater is concerned, is that correct?
Uh, stormwater.
Stormwater, sorry, stormwater. Could have been worse. Could have been worse.
Yeah, they kept me away from the auditors.
My only question is, is this, is this a function that would be more properly exercised by the Board of Health, and if so, couldn't it just be adopted by a simple regulation after the proper notice and comment period from them?
Yes, the Board of Health can adopt these.
Has there been any discussion in that regard?
Does it really matter, though, if we put it on, we can just accept it at a town meeting, and then they don't have to deal with it? What if they don't?
But then, but then who does deal with it?
What if they don't adopt it? What if they decide not to?
Yeah, I suppose.
Not mandatory, they're not required to.
With the bylaw, who's the enforcement mechanism?
Well, the bylaw, the enforcement would be us, yeah, the town would have to enforce it.
Code enforcement officer.
What?
I imagine it's the code enforcement.
Yeah, sure. Well, you know what, here he comes. He helped put right the thing. Tell us what you got.
The Board of Selectmen or the Stormwater?
It's the Board of Health.
I think we're the enforcement.
The way it's written, and it was filed with the town clerk, it started out with the Board of Selectmen, it was changed to the Board of Health.
Okay, so they are the enforcement agency after it's voted in.
Yeah, that's right.
Do you know what they think about that?
Uh, in talking with Bobby Thier, the health agent, he said he, he could positively help in enforcing this, this bylaw.
You know, we're going to end up, he's going to end up needing help with all the things we're asking him to enforce.
Yep.
Yes, we will.
Seems like, uh, we're really putting a burden on that department, aren't we?
It's put on all our departments, unfortunately.
I know, I know, everybody is... Doing more with less, so we know that.
Bob and his staff are great, and they, they always step up, no matter what.
I know they do, but it gets to difficult. Go ahead, yes, Jim.
No, I, I know it can be a burden on the town, but we have certain responsibilities to make sure that these drains and illicit discharges are taken care of. So, um, if there's a mechanism to do it, the, the most economical way, um, you know, if they're going to need help doing it, or ways to identify the issues, then I think it's our, we have a certain responsibility to do that.
Okay. Motion made by Alan, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Peter. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess you're all set now, right?
You can tell, tell Mr. Rosenberg that, uh...
Yep, he's all set.
That we have this on the warrant now.
Back over the bridge with you.
Back over the bridge, have a good day.
Take care.
Have a good night.
Uh, article twenty-three, water pollution control facility funding requests for process improvements.
Come on down.
The federal government is requiring the program.
Sandy Slavin, Sewer Commissioner, I'm the clerk, and I wrote the article.
Okay, so tell us about it.
Well, apparently some bond people got ahold of it, and made it to the point that I no longer understand it, but that's beside the point. It's, we're looking...
Bond people do things like that.
Yeah, we're looking for a ten million dollar loan to do three major upgrades to the sewer plant.
Okay, my...
Nine million dollar loan.
Okay, my question is this, this is in order to try to abate the odor issues, is that correct?
That is one of the three components, yes.
Okay. And, um, what do we have in place, or what have you learned that you can share with us, that says that this is the solution, and not necessarily another Band-Aid that we've thrown many at in order to get this relieved? Because it has been ongoing since two thousand and eight, and it's time to resolve.
If you take, it has, I'm going to say it has three components. One is to create a secondary lagoon in which semi-treated water can be stored. It's going to, um, work on the existing, uh, lagoon in which we have raw sewer sitting in, and it's going to add a de, I have to pronounce it, a denitrogenification filter in order to process what we're doing better. What is happening is that our lagoon is overflowing with water. Come stormwater, come, um, uh, what do you want to call it? Just, it's just coming in from eye to eye. It leaks all over the place, you have your sump pumps filling in, and the gloom, lagoon fills beyond the capacity of our plant to handle, and then in the non-peak hours, that is, it's processed back and whatever. So, odor is one of them, but if we don't do something, we don't have capacity at the plant to take any additional building in this town. This will allow us more capacity, better processing off-peak hours, et cetera, et cetera, but if we want any development in town, you're going to have to increase the output and a place to store for processing. So, you know, that's it. So, there's three components to it.
Okay, uh, you know, just so you know, and I want to make this clear to everybody, when we were talking about, uh, the development out at the corner of Redbrook Road, which was a forty-B, um, we asked the sewer people to tell us, um, you know, if they had capacity. And they pretty much guaranteed that they had capacity. But we all knew that they didn't, because the, the writing on the wall was clear that there was no capacity, that the plant, the lagoons were overfilling during the times of, of storm, where, and because, of course, the sump pumps kick on, the INI comes in, and all of a sudden, they were filling up. And this was getting to be a problem. Yet, they okayed it, and, you know, we're probably going to end up with that project at some point, when we really had a legitimate reason not to let them tie to our sewer treatment, and at the very least, they could have gone and put a package treatment plant out there and handled it themselves. And, uh, this is very disappointing, I just want to say. It's very, very disappointing to me that this has happened.
So, they're not paying part of this ten million?
Who isn't?
They would be...
Woodland Cove.
Yeah, Woodland Cove.
Well, there's no requirement for them to do that right now.
It's a good question, though, who is paying for the ten million?
Exactly.
So, how could we say that they have the capacity?
Can we, um, can I, can I ask a question?
We did, though.
No, we're getting on the subject here. Um, Mrs. Slavin, is it talking about, um, payment of it? Would, would the rates have to go up? Are you, do you, I'm sure you have looked at that, what the costs are in handling the, the payment on the ten million. What's the plan?
Yeah, the only, the only way would be to raise rates. You've got, what, how ma, how many ED, how many EDUs do we have? About ninety-eight hundred?
Anybody who's on the sewer has...
Something like that. That sounds pretty...
So, call it ten thousand, so...
Divided by...
So, what is about ninety bucks?
To answer the question right now, the sewer commissioners are not planning any additional rates for this. We believe the...
Ninety.
Go ahead, and we, could you, go ahead.
Please.
Please, let her continue, please.
We, we believe the one million dollar, uh, initial payment can be done using our capital plan funds that we have, and the interest in principle on the nine million can be paid for out of our capital plan without incurring additional rates. That is the plan right now. We just got a grant from, how much from, is it CZM? We just got a grant for an engineering, part of an engineering study for one of these lagoons, so that there is funds available for, um, the engineering component.
Okay.
What did we get, two fifteen?
No, I think we got a hundred and forty thousand.
Hundred and forty-five thousand, we just got a grant.
But I, no, there's no way you can do this without raising rates. That is absolutely wrong, because you're now going to take the money you were putting towards capital items before, that you were funding for capital projects, you're now going to take that money away, and you still have to pay those capital items annually. So, whether you're, it's just the old switcheroo, if you will, it's, you still have to pay for it. And if you're going to have to raise rates to do it, there's absolutely no way to not do it, so that needs to be out there. And I, I can't be a part of saying that we wouldn't raise rates, because that's, that's false, because you're going to put other capital aside to pay for this within the budget, and then have to upgrade.
And then the capital's going to have to be done eventually.
Yeah, so that's, there's no way.
I can only comment on what was said at the last Sewer Commissioners' meeting.
You know, I'm trying to look at...
That's not that work.
If that's what you say, and that's what you discussed, and that's the plan you've come up with, I can't argue that. I would just like to know if there was the need to fund this ten million dollars, what would, what would the impact be on each sewer user?
Well, we, we figured about ninety bucks.
No, we figured about nine hundred bucks over the course of twenty, and it would, it would probably be a twenty-year note, so it'd be about forty, forty-something bucks a year.
That's if it's, you get the zero percent, there might be some debt forgiveness on it and stuff, so it could be about forty, forty-five bucks, maybe a little less. Yeah, per, per EDU.
Per EDU.
Per EDU, per year.
Thank you.
Okay.
It would be a good topic for Thursday's capital planning meeting.
Does anybody want to have some more information on this before we vote, or do you want to vote on it?
Yes.
You know, it would be nice to, um, come up with a figure, and if, if it's going to be forty-five dollars, you know, we need to, you know, put another lagoon in and, and cover the smell and other things. I mean, just how are we going to do it? And forty-five dollars is a heck of a lot, but...
No, but we're assuming here, I, you know...
I agree, I agree.
Let's just, I'd rather hold off on a vote until we know exactly what the funding mechanism is, and exactly what it's going to cost each EDU ratepayer. I mean, and come on, you're going to walk down the street, and somebody says, hey, you guys spent nine million, you guys want to spend nine million bucks, and you can't tell me how you're going to get it out of me? I don't want to have that conversation.
How many gallons in an EDU?
It's just, an EDU is a, all of them, equivalent dwelling unit.
I know what it is, but there's no way that we measure how much is coming out.
We don't know how many gallons there are. We, we've been trying to work on that for years, but that hasn't worked out. All right, so, why don't we hold off on this and come back and get more settled numbers, if you don't mind, okay?
I will bring it to the committee.
Okay, awesome, thank you. All right, next up.
Plastic bag reduction by law.
Plastic bag reduction by law. Come on down. Say, why don't you tell us your name, and what you got in mind, and so on and so forth, and we'll go from there. You got to talk real good to that mic, okay? All right.
My name is Norma White, and, um, my rowing club presented a documentary called Plastic Ocean, and I got pretty fired up in thinking it was a great idea, and that I could come back and bring it to town to do a plastic bag reduction by law.
So, what are you trying to accomplish here? What is exactly what you have in mind?
Exactly what I have in mind is to present to the, in the warrant for the voters to decide...
No, no, what are you trying to do? You're trying to get rid of plastic bags, you're trying to get rid of this, you're trying, what are you trying to do exactly?
I actually have, um, I'm hoping that the town will vote that any retail establishment, defined as any retail space located in the town, including without limitation a restaurant, food or ice cream truck, convenience store, retail pharmacy, or supermarket, providing a checkout bag to customers, the bag shall comply with the requirements of being either a recyclable bag, compostable bag, or a marine-degradable plastic bag, or a reusable checkout bag, and further that the town will adopt section one and two, which was definitions presented online through the Sierra Club.
Okay. Could you, yeah, could you just bring them up, please? Thanks.
Send to us.
I did a poor job on writing the entire document, unlike such a rookie, but, um, because I thought the space provided was what you were to use, and then get your signatures, so, um, the article was limited, um, in scope, and I hope to be able to adjust that through the motion that I might make.
Can I, can I, uh, speak to this here? Were you reading?
You may, yeah.
Norma tried to put this together, and I think there was, um, a mix-up, as you were saying, in the process to use, and so, the abbreviated statement on the petition was one part that was handed in, and then she also handed in an additional three pages, I believe.
Yeah, she had plenty of names.
Right.
Only need ten.
But, but, the, the question comes, is if this additional information can be...
Brought in.
Brought in as an amendment on town meeting floor. Now, with discussion with our moderator, who's always, you know, looking out for the town, and if it's done right or not, um, I don't know if that would be the case, if it could be brought forward or not. So, um, I'm not sure the, the best way for, um, Norma to address this and, and to bring it forward. I'd, I'd hate to see it come to town floor, town meeting floor without amendments being made to, to add these definitions in the description. So, um, I, I'm not sure what the best, uh, way for her to address this moving forward at this time.
Yeah, it is, yeah, you may speak, yeah, you can speak to that.
I thought that I could use the definitions perhaps as a handout, um, and the motion isn't too far off from what was in the article above the signatures, except for the bylaw part.
Well, it'll be, it'll be up to the, it'll just, it'll be up to the moderator, where she thinks it goes beyond the scope of the original article and so on, and that's a whole big thing that she'll have to make that decision, and she may not allow it, I don't know, you know, that's, that's her business. But, um, the other thing, too, is, is it has to get past mustard, once it leaves there and we vote it, it's got to get past the AG, and who knows what's going to happen when it gets there? I mean, if it isn't written properly, that shouldn't be a problem. You know, typically what happens is, I know everybody has these things in mind, and they want to do this, and I, and I appreciate it, and by the way, I brought some, um, this is a compostable bag. And see, I was worried about losing my plastic bags, because those paper bags are lousy. You pick it up, and it tears all over the place. So I went and did some homework, and I found out that this is a compostable bag that composts in 60 days, when it's inside the thing. This is a new technology, I guess. It's made out of some kind of corn or something, I don't know. But it's, but it's plastic, you still can carry your stuff, you can do whatever, and it disappears.
Made out of hemp.
By composting it. It composts faster than a paper bag. Okay? Because that's the way they made it, which is, I didn't realize this even existed. But I really went out and asked, and I did some homework, so I wanted to know. And then, of course, they have these reusable ones, which are just a little bit thicker, so many mil.
Yeah.
And they're supposed to be able to be used 100 times before you have to get rid of them. These are not as compostable as the others. And they, the bag is a minimum of 90 percent recycled content to begin with, though. So that makes a little help. And includes like 20 percent of PCR, and the bag is 50 percent green. So it's not as advantageous as using this bag, because this is really 100 percent compostable. So I thought that was neat, and I did this little homework on this. So I don't really have a problem with that. I did have a problem if you took my straws away from me, I'd really be angry. Because paper straws are awful.
Did you want to?
There's, I remember a kid, we used to put them in our milk, and we couldn't even get halfway through, and the thing would be limp, laying over on its side, you know? And recently, I've gone into some places that use paper straws. Man, I tell them, you know, take the, I'll drink straight out of the thing. Get rid of this straw. This straw is useless, because they're really useless. And I don't want to lose those. And especially since the United States really contributes very little to plastic issues. We're very, we're very conscientious and very conservative. If you look at all the places like this, you know, we're like way down here with what we contribute, right? Peanuts. And at the top is Indonesia and China, and they have oceans, and, not oceans, I mean literally rivers, that are full from side to side, top to bottom, with plastic. I mean, it's just a sad state of affairs.
Unlike the size of Texas up in the...
Yeah, I mean, I went and looked at the pictures. Like, since this was coming up, I went and did some homework. I looked at the pictures. I was mortified at the kind of plastic and stuff that they were putting in the water and everything else like that. And I know, we don't do any of that. We don't, you hard-pressed, you find most of it on the ground, right? She picks it up. She picks up all the trash, so it's all over the thing. You find them, the Duncan stuff, the cups and everything, all over the thing. But not so much in the water as, as everybody else. Thank God, we're a little more responsible than what they are. I mean, it's just sad state of affairs. But, since they do have a compostable plastic bag, I'm okay with it. But, I'm not so sure that this is going to, this is going to pass muster when it goes to town meeting. That's the only thing I'm telling you. So be prepared that that may not happen, and you might have to have another approach afterwards, whether it's to approach the Board of Health, or to tota the Planning Board, or to go to someplace that has some ability.
Recycling Committee.
The Recycling Committee, even. You know, something of that nature, if it doesn't pass muster. That's all I'm trying to tell you. Go ahead.
Yeah, the only issue with the corn-based plastic bags, of course, is they're busy burning the Amazon rainforest to grow more corn so they can dump more Roundup in there. So there's no perfect solutions out here. This isn't one of them, as far as being a perfect solution, so...
Well, I don't know. I mean, this is pretty good on you.
Yeah, we might save the seals and kill everybody else.
Well, you know, corn is something that we grow a lot of here in the United States, so. Compost bag is proof of new generation in packaging. Organic source such as corn, One Earth Bags are not toxic. They decompose into organic compounds, and carbon dioxide, water, and biomass when composted. So, you know, they get numbers, certified numbers, that they do that and everything else. So I'm okay with these. I don't care. I mean, this helps, I'm okay.
Can I get a little insight on process? Now, if this comes forward, and she cannot amend the article, I mean, people need information, which would be the definitions and the actual articles of what we're doing. So if that's not part of the warrant, then she would need ways to get that out there. So if it comes up and it gets defeated, can it come back up in the spring?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, there's no, there's no, you don't have to hold off. If you lose, on a petition article, if you lose once, you know, you can come back.
You just come back the next time.
As long as it's not a duplicate zoning article, that's the only, I think...
No, it's not a zoning article, which would be, there's a moratorium on a zoning article, right, for a period of time?
It's like two years.
Two years or something?
Because it's difficult without getting the information out and what the actual article is. And that's what the additional three pages were, beyond the initial petition.
And I did check, because there's 122-plus cities and towns in Massachusetts that have a plastic reduction bylaw.
Yeah, this isn't new. I'm one of the signatures on there, and I, I wouldn't sit there and read through the whole thing. I know what a plastic bag ban is.
I think the intent is the same in the article as it is, or would be...
Yeah, we know what the spirit of the article is, so hopefully...
Right, but you need to have the definitions and the articles attached, I believe.
Yeah, she would.
In order to have any teeth to make a...
I don't think she, she, I don't know, I can't vouch for her, but I don't think, I think you're going to have a problem getting that in in the end result. But even if you don't, and if it fails, I think you should start with some of our boards. Go ahead, Rich, you have something?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chairman. Now, as you point out, it's ultimately a call from Madam Moderator as to what kind of amendment she would allow, if any. If you decided for political reasons, small P, not capital P, political, that you didn't want to go forward at this meeting, you could make a motion to further study the article, you know, so that people didn't get the sense that, you know, anybody voting for further study was against the idea, and then bring it back in the spring. And if you decided to bring it back in the spring, rather than going to the Sierra Club or one of the other well-intentioned lobby groups, I would get one that's already been adopted by a town and approved by the Attorney General.
That's the best.
I did actually get the one from Plymouth that was passed in the spring from Ken Stone.
Yeah.
And he emailed me, and I have that here.
Yeah, but unfortunately, that's not what's here.
It's not, and I didn't realize that.
Yeah. So the thing about law and legality is, it's, you never want to be the trailblazing adventurer.
I don't believe I am.
Well, sometimes, well, you know, sometimes you do, but, but, you know, something like this, you don't have to be the trailblazer.
Right, no.
Lots of people have gone down the trail ahead of you, so just grab one of those people who already did. Put that on, and you know that if the Attorney General has approved it once, it's probably going to approve it again.
In fact, I mean, I did check the ordinances of several towns.
Yeah, yeah. Because the thing about, sorry, editorial here, the thing about getting things from these lobby groups, and your Board of Health gets this all the time, is they'll send out these recommendations about things to do. Some of them are very good. Some of them are kind of, not like this one, some of them are kind of crazy. And they'd be very happy to have the town spend its money to justify or defend some crazy idea that they had that they're not willing to spend their own money on. But that's not the case here.
Thank you.
I have to tell you one thing. You know, one of the things is, is people try sometimes to put these things on the warrant themselves, whatever it is. There's many of these other articles.
Believe me, this is, sorry.
I know what you, and I know, they're all good-intentioned, and they all have the reason to do whatever. But we can't help you design it, or change it, or whatever. You have to do it yourself. And unfortunately, sometimes that means you don't have the benefit of town council and other things that you might have if you should approach someone of the organizations, such as open space, or whatever.
Recycling, Recycling Committee.
You know, that would then have that ability to get, to get, I know she did. I know.
Right, and I did...
You know what I'm saying to you?
I did write a letter to the Board of Selectmen, in fact, initially. And the suggestion was made to me that perhaps if I really wanted it to go on the warrant, that a citizen's petition would be more apt to get it there.
Well, that's because, I don't know who said that or who wrote that. I didn't write it. But if, if a selectman wrote that, he probably thinks that maybe he couldn't get it through the board. That's the only reason why he would do that. But because...
Well, that it would take the heat off of any board.
Well, you know, we have to vote on it ultimately anyway, so, like, we have to now, so it is what it is.
Right, right.
One good thing here is that it's on the warrant. It will have to be dealt with in some fashion at town meeting anyway, so you're raising awareness for your cause.
Right.
Nonetheless.
Right, right.
Even if you stand up, you know, as the, as the petitioner, the lead petitioner, you'll get your five minutes to present the article, and you can stand up and say, this is what I wanted to do, this is what it should do, this is what it's intended to do, and if you decide at that time, but I'm going to pull, I'm going to ask that it be moved for further study, so that I can come back in the spring with exactly what we're looking for, or something from another town. You can go through all of that, and you've got your, you know, you've got about four minutes and 45 seconds to sort of lobby the body in advance of next spring, and you've got 15 seconds to explain what you're going to do, which is like a further study or something like that.
I was hoping it'd be on the consent agenda.
And you'll probably get a question, who's going to further study it? So you might think about that as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would just hope there's a...
That'll be the first question out of their mouth.
Chairman, I just hope there's some sort of resolution before town meeting. I don't want chaos on the floor.
Yeah, well, we'll see how it all goes.
Go ahead.
It never is with Claire.
Do here.
Yeah, I think...
You know, is it going to be acceptable? Is it not? Is she even going to be able to, excuse me, speak to the article? If it's not accepted, if our moderator finds that it's, as a way it's written, it's unacceptable, and we can't amend if she'd like to. So that's what I was kind to, I was trying to bring forward that. And, you know, if it's not properly done, then that's why I was kind of asking, now, what would be the best thing for Norma White to do in order to, you know?
My suggestion is if the moderator says, no, you can't introduce it, then just automatically stand up and further study it.
And she would still have the opportunity, and she still gets her five minutes, no matter what. It's just a question of whether the additional material could be added or not. And if she doesn't feel that it's effective without the additional material, or the attempt to pass this thing would somehow be defective, then she could still, you know, have her advocacy and then withdraw it, or move it for further study, or...
Alan, go ahead.
We use one of the parliamentary techniques to kick it down the road.
Go ahead, Alan.
This particular article, I know for myself, and I can't really speak for Mary, but the two of us were the original formation of Don't Trash Wareham, so you know which way we're going to vote. It's kind of a shame that we're dealing with this, but there's a couple of things that we tried before that you may want to work on. We originally went, I think Judy Whiteside and I went to the Board of Health, and we asked them about, almost three years ago, for them to actually, because they have the ability to actually write a plastic bag bill, and they have their own enforcement mechanism there. I would kind of, if this thing doesn't happen here, you know, at this particular fall town meeting, I'd go have them, have yourself get put on their agenda, and press them to see if they will stand up and do something. Also, you want to watch, at the State House, there is a pretty omnibus bag bill moving through. But as I mentioned last week, the problem with that bag bill is, it was watered down a lot. My real concern with that bill is that they would eliminate all existing bag bills, and the state would take over their bill, it supersede everybody else's. Oh, yeah. Yes.
I did see that on Mass Green dot org, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just telling you what happened to the State House. But, you know, I know I'll help you, and Mary will help you, whatever we can do.
Thank you so much. And I, I think the Board of Health has a meeting tomorrow at 4:30 that...
Yeah, but they can't put it on the agenda. It's 48 hours after having it.
You've got to talk to them beforehand.
So you want to, if you have a chance, go down to Board of Health, see Suzanne or Bob, and ask them to get on the next agenda.
Mm-hmm.
Just so you have it, you're working ahead of time.
Okay, so we don't vote on these anyway. We don't recommend them or not recommend them, so it doesn't really matter.
I can.
We can if you want. Do you, somebody want to do it?
We normally do, but in this case, we need to know which way it's going to go.
All right, so we're going to hold off for the time being.
We don't know which way it's going to go. Nobody's speaking here, right?
Well, we'll hold off for the time being, and we'll move on.
All right, I mean, I was going to make a motion, but I amended it.
Unless you want to make a motion, what's your motion? You can make a motion anytime you want.
You want to make a motion, Jim?
You're a member of this committee.
Make a motion to support the plastic bag reduction bylaw approval, second the approval.
Your motion is to approve, and yours is second?
Yeah.
Okay, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Anybody else?
Stayed.
All right, so it's 3, 1, 1. Okay, so there you go.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Norma.
Remember, if you get those percentages at town meeting, you win. If you get those percentages at town meeting, you win.
The votes were just... All right, next up, accept the donation of the Wareham Library Foundation, Inc., in the amount of $3,200.
Oh, boy. I'm back up, huh?
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the gift of $3,200 donation from the Wareham Free Library for the purpose of paying a local history consultant to staff the Stone Local History Archive.
Second.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Alan. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, or... Next up, exception of the donation of the maple sitting chair for the Spiny Memorial Library in memory of Richard Wheeler.
All right, this is a letter that we have to the Honorable Select Board of Wareham. Good evening to you all. Please find the attached donation to the Wareham Free Library from Tom and Sherby Worthing, John Nyman, Mary Nyman, and Bob Russo, for a maple sitting chair for the Spiny Library in memory of Dick Wheeler, valued at the amount of $563.
Second.
So my motion is to accept the donation.
Second.
All right. Motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter.
Just want to make a comment. I'd like to thank them very much. It's well deserved for Mr. Wheeler.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, unanimous. Thank you so much. Discussion on change of name of the Board of Selectmen. I put this on for Alan.
Okay, let's have some fun for a while here. The Massachusetts Selectmen's Association, which represents all five of us on this board and all these selectmen in the state, which there's 297 boards of selectmen, with the current, I don't know how to put it properly, but basically, the current trend is for gender specific, not to be gender neutral now and everything else. There is, as of right now, I believe, that 68 communities have changed the name of the Board of Selectmen to the Select Board of whatever town they are. The Mass Selectmen's Association is in the process of writing a resolution, changing their name as well. Since I represent Plymouth County, Cape and the Islands, as the District Four Representative to the MSA, I'm a little uncomfortable having to vote on this down the line, so I have to ask everybody that I represent what their opinion is as well. So I'm going to need somewhere down the line, and I don't expect it to be tonight, what this board would like to do. I will make a comment that I reached out to Judy Whiteside, former selectman, to get her thoughts on this, since she's back home. I can't really repeat exactly what she said, because there's some words that I'm not allowed to say in public, at least for me anyways. But her basic comment was, this is ridiculous. And I will leave it at that, so...
You're lucky. I actually referred to her one time jokingly as Madame Chairperson, and she actually kicked me.
Oh, yeah, she's, as we all know, she's, I think, was she an English teacher, Mary?
Yeah, she was.
So she always used to basically reprimand us if we spoke in the wrong tense or the wrong language, or whatever else. So she said that she was a banker and never had an issue being referred to as any title as, with man or men in it. And it was, it was an enlightening conversation. I definitely got her blood pressure up, if nothing else. So I'm not sure where we want to go with this, but we're probably going to have to just sit there, and the board is probably going to have to vote, because they'll have to provide for those communities I represent and answer at this time here. Just let's kind of let it go and see what happens till then.
Well, we can take a vote if you want.
If this board's willing to do it now, not a problem for me.
I say no.
I personally don't care.
I, I don't have really any interest in this, to be frank with you.
I'm not sure we can really vote, because...
I think it's okay.
No, the agenda says discussion only.
All right.
It only says discussion on the agenda, so I'm not...
Okay, that's fine. We can vote, it doesn't matter, but if you don't want to, that's fine. We'll push it off, but okay. So we'll put it back on another time.
I'll give you advance notice when they actually, if they make a resolution.
Okay.
I'm glad that you're going up to Boston, and they're forcing you to spend time on these critical issues.
It's almost as much fun as hemorrhoids.
Any other town business not reasonably anticipated the last 48 hours? No one?
No, I have meeting minutes.
All right, next up, the Town Administrator's Report. What do you got?
Oh, no, I don't, no.
No, that's for later.
Oh, wait, I do.
Town Administrator's Report.
No, thank you.
No, no, nothing? Okay. Next up, liaison reports. Alan?
We actually, I think, missed Board Comments number six a little bit early tonight.
Oh, do you want to go back there?
Just, I'll do both at the same time.
You can do them both. You have Board Comments, do it right now.
And Jim might want to chime in, and this is also, actually, we were both at the recycling and dump over in Rochester at the same time. And we're sitting here looking at each other, watching, obviously, three men probably either have dismantled a house or construction, whatever, just merrily for about an hour, maybe, dumping stuff constantly into the, in the bin there, and just compacting whatever. And it's just, I'm just disappointed with everything going on that we still don't have, and Jim said it's going to change. Someone actually guarding the henhouse, as they say there, because that's an awful lot of stuff that we all are paying for, that someone should be in there in the first place. And I wouldn't mind if it was...
We're not paying for that. That's the CMAS one. That's 100% CMAS, and it's run by CMAS. In the future, we will be, but that's the one thing people need to know right now, if they're having issues, if there's anything. It's $0 to CMW, which are to the town, and that's, that's 100% to the district. Now, they had the people out there taking, taking numbers and the plates, searching them, and they're going to have to do that again in the future, once we take it over back from CMAS. But I just, it does need to be known that we are not being charged for that, and that we are not running that facility, the districts, the towns, or anything.
Right. We pay nothing for refuse disposal.
Right.
You know, at either of the facilities. That's all free, pretty much.
But that wasn't going into refuse.
No, it's going, but it's...
That was going into trash.
It's going into trash, but we pay nothing. We pay nothing for that operation. What we pay for, you know, being the CMW, basically is attorney fees, audits, and one other thing, for the most part. Everything else is a pass-through, either a reimbursement, or we actually get paid, you know, the town gets paid, we get paid.
Yeah.
It's been a moneymaker, you know? You put the trash on the top of the back box, you give it a turn, and money comes out two shoots.
Yes, CMAS covers 75...
It's going to change 2020.
Right.
And 2020.
They cover what, 75% of Benson Brook stuff, but 100% of Rochester, right? Isn't there, there's something?
I didn't know that. I'll ask tomorrow.
Yeah, okay.
So, go ahead.
I'm still complaining about how it runs, what it is, because at the end of the day, when this is all said and done, we're probably going to be looking at a substantial, you know, fee moving forward, and it's endemic to the whole situation.
Yeah.
CMAS has had the issues of what goes in and everything else, so that's where it's at. The other piece I have is, I want to remind everybody again, town meeting is coming up shortly. We have electronic voting, and I'm really hoping people will show up to see if this works or not for them. As far as reports and stuff, give me a second. I know Mary wants to go home, I can see.
I told you it was going to be a long meeting.
I'm fine, I'm behaving.
No, I'll let everything go until next week.
All right, Jim?
We have a Carver, Marion, Wareham, Regional Refuge, Disposal District meeting tomorrow over in Carver at the Town Hall. A lot of things are up for discussion, as Mr. Sullivan said, that we've been collecting data, and that's something they never had, about how many people are using, and from what towns, you know, either Benson Brook or Rochester. How many tons? So we compiled that. The executive director has done a good job at that. He's good at those things, and very much appreciated. So it's a, it's a period of change, and it should be an interesting meeting tomorrow. So that's one thing. And like Alan and I were both there, and hopefully, we can get someone to man the gate over to Rochester, even if we have to pay for it, being we, the district, and so we can get a better count of what's going in there from people from the towns, and, you know, turn back demolition material, mattresses, box springs, things as such, so we can really look at, how many tons are we bringing in? What's the cost? What's our projected cost going to be? You know, without these numbers, you're kind of guesstimating, and that's not a way to really run an organization or a municipality. That's about it. Thank you.
Okay, Peter?
Yeah.
Mary? Boy, everybody's moving along now. All right, before I hit the consent agenda, in your packet, you will find a copy of the master plan. Everybody?
Yes.
Next week, we're going to be talking about the master plan, and if there's anything any of the selectmen would like to see added, or subtracted, or whatever, from the master plan. Now, let's make it clear that the direction that the town takes is the job of the Board of Selectmen to lead. This master plan is a helpful guideline, because it's what the community would like to see as well, not just the community, but other boards, and so on and so forth. So, in my opinion, regardless of whether who's going to ultimately decide with this document, Planning Board, or whoever, and it is the Planning Board, if we're going to get on board, we need to have in it what we'd like to see. And so you all have homework. It's kind of a lengthy document. Read it, mock it up, do whatever you got to do, bring it back, and we'll talk about it.
Okay.
Okay, for next week.
Also fits in with our own policy 8810.
Yeah, it's got to fit with our policies and everything else. I mean, that's the way it is. If you don't buy into it, then you might as well just, like I said, the last one, we just throw it under a counter someplace and let it collect dust.
Waste paper basket.
And by the way, that's exactly what it was doing when we found it.
Right? It's a guide.
Yeah, it's a guide.
This is what we'd like to see as we're moving forward.
Exactly, exactly. And, I mean, it talks about a lot of things. There's things in here about the library, about schools, about all kinds of things. So it's an extensive document.
Mr. Chairman, selectmen, you need to just hitting the nail on the head that it is a guide. It's not a weapon to stop things.
No, we don't want it to be a weapon.
And if it's not referenced in there, doesn't mean it can't happen.
Correct.
So times change.
Exactly. But we don't want to make a weapon out of it, but we need to buy into it, so that, and if it has what we want in it, and the direction we want to see things go, that's a good thing, not a bad thing. Everybody buys into it, that's good. Now remember, you're right, it's a guide, and we'll use it hopefully appropriately. All right. Authorization to sign bills, we don't have any bills. Okay, we do have a set of minutes, right?
Yes. I move that we approve the minutes from July 30, 2019.
Motion made to approve July 30 minutes, second. Second, Alan. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, and unanimous. And I believe the other set of minutes...
Motion to adjourn.
We already got it.
It was already done. We already approved those. So I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I just did.
Ah, so moved by Alan, seconded by Peter. All, any discussion? No, they can't have discussion. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, and unanimous. Thank you Wareham. Have a great week. Sorry we kept you here so long.